Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee Meeting for Wednesday, November 10, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. We're at the John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street. Everyone is required to wear a mask and maintain social distancing unless you are speaking. We're going to move right into our agenda, which we'll start with the roll call, please. Member Secretary Johnson Musad.
Member Karen.
Here.
Vice Chair Hextrom, Member Hollins.
Here.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I am here. Chair Prayety.
Here.
Member Wall.
Here.
Mayor Wiedegardner.
Here.
You got a little cheat sheet back there. I didn't know you had. That's tricky. All right. We are called to order at 6:01 p.m. We're going to go right into our second agenda item, which is the report from our business manager, Mr. Andy Paquette. Andy, take it away.
Thank you, Chair Prayety. You have your updates in your packet. Again, no alarm regarding the negative balance. What we're doing is the business office and personnel have gone and we've reconciled the staff between the Personnel Department, HR, and what we have in the budget. Now, we have actually asked the administrators to do a third check for their respective programs and departments to go ahead and do that. We don't expect any significant variances because we've had the positions budgeted. We just want to make sure that we've got bodies now matched officially with the salaries. But just to give you an idea, even though the report looks with that negative balance, we still have unallocated funds out of our revolving accounts of $1.8 million that have yet to be charged, and that's a combination of the special education accounts that we use, a circuit breaker in the 240 grant, as well as school choice. In particular, the circuit breaker, for some reason, the accounting system doesn't allow encumbrances, purchase orders, to the circuit breaker revolving account. So we're encumbering everything to the local account, and then we do a reclass of expenses to the circuit breaker. So, once we start to get enough expenses to end up doing that, we'll be reclassing those, which will then bring that negative quote-unquote down to, in the black, close to zero. But I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the committee? No questions? Really? Okay. Did you want to add anything, superintendent?
Only the summary.
Hold it for a second.
Only the summary of the ESER grants that was requested. I did it on three separate sheets so that it was a little bit easier to read and honestly allowed Karen and I to cross and triple-check to make sure everything was what it was. ESER 1 was written prior to my arrival, but this is what it is allocated for. Some of this will be able to be, or will be amended at some points because some of the staffing that we allocated for, such as the float nurse that would allow Mrs. Savitri to act more as our head nurse during COVID response still. The float nurse was hired later. So, there are some modifications that will occur, but this is generally the expenditure plan for ESER 1. Any questions about that, the one? I'll just go one at a time.
Thank you.
ESER 2 is a little bit more complicated. Some of the automatic water bottle filling stations had been provided prior to my arrival, but we definitely need more across the district, so that has been allocated. That is a little bit more complicated of a project than anticipated in that not only will plumbing need to be addressed, but masonry as well. So, Mr. Hevy is working on that with city folks so that we can get those installed. We do have funds allocated for restorative practice training. After meeting with some student groups and some staff, this may broaden to include some equity and racism training. It may be just broader than specifically to restorative practice, but it's really related for staff training in responding to students' concerns. We have tech infrastructure. This is for wireless access points throughout the district. Computer upgrades. Carol has been very clear that we will have approximately 800 of our Chromebooks at end of life by the end of next school year, meaning that they won't take updates, they won't take security upgrades, and really will need to be replaced. One of the conversations we're having administratively is to relook at what we're using technology for from an instructional standpoint, so that before we make the decision to replace, we need to find out what device will match the instructional needs. Many of the devices were purchased in response to COVID. So, we have a lot of Chromebooks that work with our system, but some of them may not work for all of the needs for the students, especially as they get older into high school. So, we're investigating that. We have tuition for the Beacon Program, which is a program that is held part-day at GCC for some of our students. Budgeting for professional development to create our English Language Arts curriculum at the elementary and middle schools. That's being worked on with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. The materials that come out of that training and decisions about our curriculum. Screenings for academic performance, literacy in math screening materials. We'll also be having staff at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high, working with Mr. Pratt, our new middle school assistant principal, who's serving as our restorative practice facilitator, to write a social-emotional learning curriculum, K through 12. Preschool has, they have standards related to their social-emotional development embedded. And we will be working primarily at the secondary level, including students, and identifying some of the needs that need to be met through the social-emotional curriculum. And then Chris will facilitate the adult work to get all the lessons written district-wide. And then curriculum writing for English Language Arts, math, district-wide, and then our foreign language standards were recently upgraded, so that will need to be addressed as well. So, we pay stipends for staff to do curriculum writing outside of work time. So, that's this year. And then the same grant for next year. We had originally intended, when I first arrived in the district, to utilize some of this money for academic tutors.
Thanks, Andy.
For academic tutors, but as the year has evolved, it has become clear that we needed to switch our focus to the social-emotional support. So, we'll be amending the grant. We have posted for and hired one already, additional adjustment counselors, one for middle school and for high school. We'll be, we are providing a late bus next year for our students, middle school, high school, to stay after. Again, additional training for our staff. We have a stipend for Mr. Pratt to do the work of the restorative practice facilitator. Again, continuing the Beacon Program and the curriculum writing. So, that's ESER 2. Any questions about that one?
You have balance left to spend for FY '24, or do you get another ESER grant?
The, well, the next ESER grant's ESER 3.
Okay, okay.
The grants, because they're generated from the federal level, they really go through September 30th of a year, so they do leak in a few months to that following fiscal year. We were trying to write the grants in a way that was as least confusing as possible, which is not always that easy when our fiscal year and the school year and the federal fiscal year are different. So, in this particular case, we didn't necessarily need to roll into the following fiscal year. At this time, we reserve the right to amend.
Any other, Susan has a question. Member Hollins, go ahead.
Is the Beacon Program for students full-time or part-time courses? Is it early college, high school, like a year of early admission? Would you just explain that?
It is for some of our at-risk students who are in danger of dropping out. So, 17 of our students go to the downtown campus for part-days, and they leave campus after they ate lunch at the high school and then spend the afternoon at the Beacon Program, where they've been working on some entrepreneurial business coursework and following pathways that may lead them to certificate programs at GCC.
Okay. So, then moving on to ESER 3, which I'm pleased to say was just approved this week.
Right? It was this week?
Yes. Okay. So, this is where some additional academic services were built in. Our math coaches and ELA coaches were budgeted for two years out of this grant. Unfortunately, right now, some of our coaches, our middle school coaches, have not moved into their coaching roles yet because we have staffing issues, so they continue to be in classrooms right now. But the elementary coaches are working in coaching and intervention roles. The previous meeting, you folks approved a job description for Director of Behavioral Services. I'm pleased to say we have some qualified, appears that we have some qualified applicants, so interviews will begin. We did have one potential applicant who is not able to take the position at this time, but we have other qualified applicants that we'll interview. We have budgeted to increase our instructional technology staff. Since the pandemic, the amount of technology being utilized is extraordinary, and the current staff that we have are not adequately able to support the students. And we saw that when we had some deployment of device delays at the start of the year, and they're having to try to repair as much as possible. And they also are responsible for getting all students and new staff logged into all the systems. And so, at this point, to be the most efficient and productive with technology, we added new staff. I am, as of today, however, I do not believe we've hired anyone yet in those positions. We have to pay masked teachers retirement for any professional salaries, so that's accounted for. We had already begun some professional development for the staff at AEL around supporting students with special needs, because that's an integrated program. There is some, there will be some mentoring for the new Director of Behavioral Support so that we can build a collaborative and cohesive program, but that should be fairly short-term. Again, continuing with the social-emotional learning curriculum writing. Additional English Language Arts materials and intervention support materials. As we increase the numbers of students who are identified as needing intervention, then we are more specific in the types of deficits, instructional deficits we're seeing, so we need to get additional intervention instructional materials. Continuing with all the staffing, adding again another layer, hopefully, of technology upgrades. You know, I'll be able to speak more about this when we do our capital request. We have desktops, Chromebooks, smart boards, all of that is cycling out. So, there's many layers to the technology updates. Again, continued curriculum writing. We have a fair amount of money allocated at this point for facilities upgrades. Some of that includes safety and security upgrades. We have budgeted for an instructional coach at the high school for next year. We're not in a position right now to make any staffing changes there, and felt the focus in this regard would be better starting next school year. And then we have the late bus continuing. So, at this stage, we now have this year and the next two academic years where we have a late bus accounted for, and then continuing our social-emotional curriculum writing. That's not a one-time event, and it will continue to evolve as students identify the areas they see as being the greatest need. And at the elementary and middle, what our data shows us the needs are in terms of, generally, social-emotional learning curriculum is around empathy, self-awareness, social awareness, so talking about how your behavior impacts yourself, how it impacts others, society around you, how to make good decisions, things like that. So, it would vary, obviously, from the elementary up through the high school. So, that is.
Thank you for all that detail.
For the grant.
I appreciate being able to see it and spelled out in the different phases of the grant. We have any additional questions from the Member Hollins? Go ahead, and then Secretary Johnson Musad.
I just, I want to thank you for providing this. It's really helpful. It's about, it's like about $6 million of new funding. I had two questions. The first is, in the $700,000 for facility upgrades, would you give a little more information on that? And then the second question is, there's been a lot of discussion about reinstating SROs. So, my question is, if you were to decide to do that, would it be fundable under the new funding? Or if you.
I know you haven't, I don't know what you've decided, but just out of curiosity, how would it be funded if you decided to do that?
Well, I think that's a conversation that we'd have to, you folks would need to have as a committee. And then certainly, if funding is needed, you know, the grants are remendable, there would have to be a conversation with the police chief about arrangements, and, you know, we'd figure things out from there. But the facilities upgrades, some of it I'm happy to speak to, some of it I am cautious in speaking to because it is related to safety and security. And so, one of the things you don't do is advertise your measures. But these would be more facility-related, not people. So, we also would be looking at things as Eric, Mr. Hevy, is continuing to assess the facilities. Do we need any additional HVAC updates? Do, you know, things along those lines. So, we allocated a fair amount until he's able to identify specifics, and also as we're getting quotes for some things and working with the police department and fire departments about our physical structures, what we need to do, then we may be able to move some of this.
Just a quick follow-up. Was any of this for the Green River School?
No.
Okay, thank you.
It's kind of amazing to see how readily we are able to use $6 million of funding, and it just kind of speaks to how much of a deficit or a funding we are operating under all the time in terms of the actual needs of the schools. How did you think about the, having this big influx of kind of one-time funding in terms of, how do we, how do you spend it in a way that doesn't kind of create things that need to be funded going forward?
Well, some things will need to be funded going forward, and we'll need to, over the next few budget cycles, begin making adjustments in funding for staff. So, if we have retirements and any, for example, I'm not saying this is the case at this point, but if we were to have a position, someone retires, then we look at scheduling, we look at who else is in the department, and if that position would have gone unfilled, we then can assign that salary in the local budget to one of the grant-funded people so that we begin adding them into the regular operations. Some things, like technology, we will have to talk about, you know, refresh structures in the budget because we're not, it's fortunate that we have this money from a very unfortunate reason, but it would not be a good plan to assume that we'll get, you know, over $5 million from the federal government periodically. So, that's something, you know, Carol Wolfsburg, the tech director, and I are looking at, and Andy, working on how to start building in some refresh funding in the local budget.
I actually believe you do get an ESER 4 too, don't you?
I haven't seen it yet, but I'll take it.
Yeah. No, I think somewhere along, I think. I could be wrong. I was more schooled in ESER last spring than I remember now, but I think there's another one coming. I don't know how big it'll be.
We will turn it down. No, we will not turn it down. So, you know, again, the later out some of these allocations get, when we're into '24, there may be some amendments that I share with you folks as upgrades, because the later we hire staff, the more salary money that we can reallocate, things along those lines. So, you know, there will be adjustments, but I think this, this supports the priorities in the district that were talked about when I interviewed, the mental health, the academic supports, the technology piece. And then, of course, we need to continue looking at our, our facilities, especially right now, so.
Thank you. It's a, it's a great update. I'm hoping that we can get one regularly from you on where those funds are at as things adjust.
I will ask that to.
ASKP. Thank you. Okay. So, any further on that from the committee? We'll move on then to item number three, approval of the minutes from October 13, our meeting. I will take a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So move.
Member Wall, and a second. A second from Member Hollins. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor with an "aye"?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, that passes, and we, thank you all. And we're now into the public comment section of the meeting. It is actually wonderful to see people at our meetings. I think we've had three or four in-person meetings with just Mary Byrne from the recorder. Thank you, Mary, for sticking by us. So, everyone who wants to speak will get to speak. I did notice there were people who came in after we had started the sign-up, so if you haven't signed up, but Susan Farber, are they seeing? Susan Farber, our note-taker over there, our recording secretary, if you haven't signed up. And the way it works is you come up, you give us your name and the town that you live in, and you'll have three minutes, and we just go in the order that people signed up. Who do we have first?
Andrea Michael, followed by Jennifer Dello.
Go ahead. You just press the button until it's green, like mine. You might have to hold it the first time. There you go.
Okay. Hi, I'm Andrea, Andrea Michael. I'll sit back. I live in Greenfield. I have two kids. Can this be turned down?
Okay.
Okay. My, I have a third grader at Four Corners and a fifth grader at the middle school. The third grader's having a really great year, so if it was just him, I would not be here, but the fifth grader's having a pretty terrible year, so I apologize for my emotions. And from the beginning of the year, he was talking about every time he came home, kids are yelling at each other, the kids are yelling obscenities at the teacher every day. The first day he reported a good day, I said, "Why?" And he said, "Because nobody yelled at the teacher today." His classroom was evacuated twice because a student was throwing desks. I did not hear about that from the school. I heard about it from him and other students. He now has a long-term sub who has them for ELA. His math is good, as far as I know. They are watching movies every day, just regular movies, and they're also on their computers playing games, and that went away. Like, he's playing sniper games on his computer at school. So, I'm really concerned about what's going on with that. I don't blame the school, and I don't, I want to be supportive. I think what's happening is a, is a resource issue. There are not enough grown-ups in the school to help the students who are really having a hard time. I think there's, the students are coming back from COVID, and they're just freaking out, some of them, and the others are not getting the attention that they need, or the learning certainly, that they are all deserving of. So, on the topic of the COVID money, I would love to see some of that spent towards, I don't know if we, I also heard of a teacher quitting because of maybe some safety issues. I don't know what that's about at the middle school, but there's rumors, there's lots of concerned parents. So, I don't know what we can do, but I just wanted to say that this is happening. There are a lot of concerned parents. Bonuses for teachers to make them not quit, more money for IAs. I don't know what it is. They can't hire people, it seems like, at the middle school. I asked my son what he would want me to say, and he asked me to bring up racism. He has, there's been students in his classroom calling students of color the N-word. He's heard of an issue with a kid wearing Klan robes at the high school. No? Maybe a rumor? And he watched a student of color be suspended for what he described as not doing anything that meant being suspended. So, he's concerned about that. I'm really glad to hear that money is going towards training for those racial and racism issues. I am strongly opposed to SROs in the schools. I've also heard a rumor that.
Three minutes.
Is this my time? Strongly opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Jennifer, Ms. Faith.
Hi, yeah, I'm Jennifer Waidello. I have two children, the high school level. I'm here for every kid.
What town do you live in, Jennifer?
I live in Greenfield.
Great, thank you.
I'm an advocate for every child here in this town. There's some major problems here. We have to address the psychological problems of these children. They're under anxiety, stress, everything from the COVID. What are we addressing to these children? They're out of control. Children don't want to go to school. They're crying. My daughters play on sports. The teams are out of control. The kids are crying. There's lockdowns three times a week at the high school. What are we doing for these children to make them feel safe? They do not feel safe anymore. We need to address this. This is a priority now. It needs to be addressed. We need to get officers back into school. We need to take care of these children. You're going to lose these kids. I'm a nurse. The emergency rooms are swamped with suicidal children. This is a whole-world-wide problem, and it's, it's major here in Greenfield, and it's only getting worse by the minute. You need to do something. I'm sorry. I feel for these children. They are crying for help, and what kind of help are we giving them? Can you tell me what we're doing? What are we doing in the high school levels to counsel these children? We need a therapy dog. We need, we need something. We need a police officer in that school. Kids are throwing chairs through the ceiling. It's out of control. Do you see it? Do you, do you see it? Can somebody answer? What are we doing for these kids? What are we doing?
We hear you. We're here to take your comments.
And I'm very upset. I am, as you can see, I'm upset, and half these parents here, I'm sure, are upset with us. It's bad. It's, it's only getting worse. So, you need to address it. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Is it on? Okay. All right. My name is Faith Hayes. Live here in Greenfield. Got kids in the middle school and in the high school. Just to kind of reinforce what Jen just said, our kids. our kids come home daily talking about the insanity. And we might get an email about it. We may not. There's certainly no details and I understand and respect confidentiality. But as parents, we're left wondering what is really going on? There, you know, we hear reports of cruisers at the school, multiple cruisers, kids are scared. Teachers, teachers can't teach. There's no support. And it seems as though, you know, there might be a view of, you know, there's an isolated group that's causing these problems, so to speak, and not to single anyone out. But our kids aren't learning. And they're also learning that, you know, the people that they're looking to, to help, aren't helping. And it's not a teacher issue. This is not by any means a teacher issue. I think our teachers are amazing for showing up to work every day because it sounds like it's absolute insanity. And I hope half of what our kids are telling us is true. But I don't want my kids to go to school. And I, you know, and we've been given no sense of when something's going to change, what the change is going to be, and what we can do as parents to help facilitate that. I have begged and pleaded and met and just found out that perhaps Mr. Cavalo is leaving to be a presence in the school, to come and see, to volunteer, to stand outside the bathroom so our kids can go to the bathroom and not, and not, not be restricted. And have been turned down. Have been blocked every chance, you know, I've asked on multiple occasions and have gotten absolutely nowhere. You know, and to hear that our kids are being restricted as to how many times they can go to the bathroom, now I get it as a, you know, I understand why because it, it is a problem, those transitions and crazy things are happening in the bathrooms. But what are we doing to address it? And why aren't parents part of the dialogue? I ask.
Excuse me, are you Faith or Jane?
Me.
Sorry about that. Jane, Winell is next, and then Alex.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Winell and I live in Greenfield. I am a teacher at Greenfield Middle School. I actually want to take a moment for all we have lost in COVID and for the collective grief that we have experienced, the collective paradigm shift that we got to in COVID and remote. We were isolated and it was hard. It was incredibly hard. And then hybrid was almost the worst of both worlds. And I have a new analogy. It was tech purgatory. So our kids are struggling. It was hard anyway to be in middle school. And I liked school. I was the buildings and grounds representative at my school. And we picked up trash. And I'm doing that with middle schoolers now. And we picked it up and we have more trash now. So we're going to try to do another pickup day on Friday. I care so much about these kids. I stay in that school until well past dark. We need a ton of support and that can look a million different ways. And I strongly, as someone who has witnessed police violence in this world, it raises my stress level when cops are called onto school grounds. It makes kids more nervous. And we know from the research, when you try to control people, the opposite happens. People run away, people get scared, the anger goes up. I am all for therapy dogs. I am all for separate spaces where people can cool down. I am all for parent involvement. I am on a texting basis regularly with parents about how their kids are doing. I volunteer my time to do an after-school club. We need after-school clubs. How are you going to expect adolescents to socially distance, keep their mask on, wipe down their desk, like white, like touch Clorox all the time, only go to the bathroom a few times because of staffing shortages? Like there's so many things. And then how can we expect them to engage in academic rigor when they don't understand the material and their frustration is valid? I understand the, the fear of desks flying, but there are so many steps before we got to that point. And a school resource officer is going to make things worse. And I am going on the record that this will make it harder for me to support students. It will make my burnout sooner. And I am holding on and my colleagues are holding on. We need support. We need AmeriCorps, we need student volunteers, we need therapists in training, we need therapy dogs, we need after-school clubs, we need to partner with community action, we need to partner with everyone we possibly can for these kids. They need choice and voice in what they do and how they learn. We know that controlling kids and telling them exactly what to do all day long is going to stifle their creativity and their well-being. And I'm worried about the quiet kids as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Alex Sciano is next, followed by Matthew.
Hello, my name's Alex Sciano and I'm a resident of Greenfield. Have two kids in the high school, one in the middle school. One kid in the high school, one kid in the middle school. Basically, the last two weeks, there's been five sheltering places, pulled fire alarm, multiple bathroom incidents. I just don't know how a kid can really learn in that environment. And I know that, that you say, well, it's a few kids or whatever the group of kids is. But if you keep doing the same thing, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. I mean, I understand that there was a kid with a knife in school and he's not expelled, not suspended back in school. That's crazy. It's absolutely crazy. And if you want your kid who's trying to learn and have a good high school experience, you know, it's not going to happen if he's anxious walking down the hallway. So I'm, I don't know exactly what the answer is. But what's going on now certainly isn't working. Certainly is the opposite of working. So I don't know exactly. I know a lot of people are against a resource officer, but it can't get any worse in the high school. The kids are strong, they're big, they're violent. You can't expect a teacher to, to separate the fight. You can't expect a teacher to block somebody from trying to hurt another kid. That's not what they're paid to do. The teachers are doing an excellent job. My son's doing very well in his classes and likes all his teachers. It's not an educational problem. It's administration. You need to give them the right and the authority to expel kids if it's so ju, if it's justified. And that's all I have to say. Something has to change. Has to be, we need a safe environment for our kids. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew LaFleur, followed by Rachel.
Hello, Matthew LaFleur, Greenfield. I have two students, one in middle school and one in high school. And just to piggyback on what everyone's saying, my concerns are with the environments of the schools. The tone is extremely negative. The incidents that are going on is just, it's unacceptable in any, any society. The faculty issue is not because the people don't want to work. It's because they don't want to be at this school system. We are losing teachers, we are losing students. And I, I'm a full advocate for having a student resource officer. I think that is something that the high schools especially needs. To comment on Mr. Sciano, that these kids are adult size. And when you have multiple issues where it's becoming safety of not only the students but the faculty, it's really no brain for me at this point. I tried reaching out to Principal Cavolo on Friday. I had a meeting set up to meet with him at 9:00 a.m. They called me at 7:30, rescheduled to 9:30. Then they asked me if I could do it at 11:00 and then 12:30 and then 2:30. And finally to the point to where I was literally waiting my entire day and not one communication back from him, even though we had meetings scheduled. So the communication in the school system is just, it's horrible at this point. And it's unfair to the parents and especially to the students. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name.
Could you pause just for a minute?
Yes.
Let Shelley know you're up next.
Okay. Yep. So I'm Rachel Cronin Townsend. I'm a teacher here at the middle school. I live here in Greenfield and I am a parent of a student at the high school and of a graduate of Greenfield High School. I've taught here in Greenfield since before my children were born. I have so much skin in this game. It's, it's, it's unimaginable. I am really sad to be hearing about all the problems at the high school and being part of and experiencing the situation at the middle school. I think we need help. And I think we, as a school community, need to humbly seek out help from everyone we can get it from in our community. Please come in, volunteer, support us. Every parent should have, should be asked to come in and help. And we should be able to quarry everyone quickly and accept them and understand that we need to be transparent. And we need to not be ashamed or embarrassed to have people come in because if we don't let people come in, then we're not going to be able to fix the problem. We need so many people. We need people to come in with their therapy dogs. We need therapists in here. We need, and if we don't have the money to find these people, then we need, there are so many people. Like, look around you, right? I imagine that more than 50% of the people in this room would say, yes, I'll come in and help if I can. You know, if I don't have to go to work or, or whatever. Like there are people here who can do that. I am going to say that we also have people in our schools who are traumatized by police. Traumatized by police. And the idea of bringing in police officers into our schools is not something that I can condone. And I don't want to work in a building where there is a police officer who's also working there. Police have a place, but it's not in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley Allenby, and then Jane is next.
Okay, good evening. And I just wanted to start by saying that I wanted to read on the agenda here, the comments, how it's all supposed to be conducted here. It says improper conducts and remarks will not be allowed. Defamatory and abusive remarks are always out of order. If a speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks, a chairperson can terminate the individual's privilege to address. Can we start doing this in the schools too? Because that would be really helpful. If we could enforce the respect level that these teachers aren't getting. Teachers, coaches, faculty, they're all leaving. Our schools are unsafe. I have two fourth grade boys that I am terrified to send to the middle school next year. I hate the idea of school choice. Don't make me fill this out, okay? I don't want to send my kids to another school district. I went to Greenfield. I was a graduate. I had a great experience. I want that for my kids. The fifth grade shouldn't be in the middle school. Nobody's brought that up tonight. I would like to see what comments and how we could maybe move forward with some of this COVID money to maybe bring those kids back to the elementary school level. I feel like there are a lot of concerned parents, obviously, because of the violence. Shouldn't there be a zero tolerance for violence in our schools? If you attack somebody, you shouldn't be allowed back. Kids are getting attacked. This is, this has got to stop. Like, I, I don't obviously have the answers, but I am representing a large group of very concerned parents with what is happening or, better yet, what is not happening in our schools. I support an officer in the school. They're coming there anyway to de-escalate situations. We need to make it so that those situations do not get to the point of needing five police cars there. I mean, it's common sense. I feel that if we all work together, I know I'm a little worked up right now, but this has been a long time coming. I want what's best for the kids. You all want what's best for the kids. They all want what's best for the kids. This is, it's just, something's got to, something's got to give. I mean, I could go through more, but that is really just what I have to say.
Thank you.
James Henry, and then Sarah. And I'm still looking to spell your last name, sorry.
Good evening. My name is James Henry. I live at 13 Pierce Street here in Greenfield. Past member of the school committee, past member of the town council back in the day, charter commission, more boards and committees than I care to shake a stick at. Tonight, I'm here as Isaiah's dad. I got a call from my son Isaiah at about quarter of one this afternoon telling me that they've been locked down three times today alone, that he is feeling unsafe and he wanted me to come and pull him out. I don't do this very lightly. I want him to be in school. But when, I have a little bit of history. Before I came back here to Greenfield, I was living in Florida where my daughter was a freshman in high school when they had the Parkland shooting. And she went from being an enthusiastic member of her school to wanting to go to school online because she didn't feel safe. So when Isaiah tells me today that he's not feeling safe in the school, that's when I said, well, I got to go to the school board tonight because you guys really need to know that this is having a significant effect on the students. And I trust, I'm not going to tell you all how to do your jobs. You know, I trust that this will get the attention that it needs. But I hope that we can come up with a solution so that our students can feel safe again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, through, followed by Jamie.
I might get a little emotional because I actually worked at the high school as an instructional aide. And today was brutal. And I just came here to tell you that this community needs to come together. These kids do not live in a vacuum. They don't go to the school and then disappear into boxes somewhere. They are members of the community. Their families are, are affected by what's going on in the school. And we need to call it what it is and not sweep it under the rug. We sit there, I'm serious. We sit there in the mornings in advisory and watch these banal videos about community that's like kind of out there. And it's like, where are our real conversations with these children who will be adults? Some of them are on the verge of adulthood. Where is the true heartfelt conversation with the families? We should be having community meetings at the school every week for every parent who wants to come in and talk about how their child is feeling. We should have meetings every week with the kids. Honestly, we could go class by class. We could represent, have representatives from each advisory come in and say like, this is how our class is feeling. What are your solutions? They are affected by it as well. And we're just like sweeping, it's just like, don't talk about it. Don't talk about it. We're just going to like shine it on. And it's, it's ridiculous. Rumors start, we don't know. The Nazi comment? I heard that the Nazi was dressed, someone was dressed as a Ku Klux Klan member at their Halloween party. Is that true? I don't know. Somebody told, somebody told us today that there was a Fight Club in the bathroom. Is that true? We don't know because it's all in secrecy. And we've got to get it out in public and call it what it is. We are in crisis. These children belong to this community. So if they are in crisis, the community is in crisis. And we, we just, you know, there's, there was an article I read. They were having fights in school in Maryland. So what did they do? The dads came in. They volunteered and walked the halls. And they were welcomed into the school and the fights stopped.[1780.74] fights stopped. I said to a kid today, what if we have your moms and dads come in here all the time? You know? Come in, they come in for lunch, they serve lunch, they... I don't know. Sit in the classroom, be an I.A. for an hour. They don't have to commit their whole life to it, but if they have time and they have willingness, we got to get this community involved in this. It's crazy. I go in there, I walked out of there at lunch and was like, I don't know if I can go back. So I go back after lunch, and there's friggin' two lockdowns. I'm like, are you kidding me? And the kids start putting taping things like on the windows to the other classrooms. And I'm like, sorry, go ahead, as long as it's positive. That's what I said. Go ahead. That's your parents to email every single one of you people every single day.
Jamie Hawkins, fellow guy of ours.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Hawkins. I have two boys, one in 6th grade, who I have since moved to Eaglebrook due to all of the school issues that have been going on. My other is in 4th grade, and I'm very fearful of him going to the middle school next year. I've been fortunate at Four Corners to have great teachers for him because he needs structure. I think we need to get control of what's going on in these schools. I can tell you personally, I think having a school resource officer back... I'm a probation officer. I don't know if I look like a really scary person, but I don't think I do. I do a really good job. I think that people need to be held accountable. Students need to be held accountable. And I think there can be a really good relationship with the school resource officer and students. It doesn't have to be a negative impact. I have a great relationship with the people that I supervise on probation. Some of them still call me years after they've gotten off probation, which makes me wonder if I have even done my job if they like me that much, but in all seriousness, teachers can't teach like this. Students can't learn like this. Our taxes have gone up, and I voted for them to, to get new schools, and they're being destroyed. There's one bathroom that people can use. These kids are going to filter out into our community, and I can guarantee you, I will see them in superior court, and this is not what we want for these kids. We can't keep sweeping it under the rug. We have great teachers in this community, and we have great students, and there needs to be accountability for the ones that are ruining it for the rest of our kids. I don't want a school choice, my son either, like Shelley said. Our kids in the same grade, they're very good friends, and the parents of my younger son and I have come together and been looking into school choicing, which makes Greenfield pay other school districts for our kids to go there. I don't want my taxes to go, I don't think anybody else does, to have our kids be school choice to a different school when we can all work together to fix the problem here. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And then followed by Madeline and Mackenzie.
How's everybody doing? My name is Abbas Sekunjanian. I am a father of three girls that go to Greenfield High School. I don't usually... This is my first meeting ever, because I have full trust in teachers and in staff and in whoever's in charge, that they're trying and doing their best to protect our kids and to have them learn and stuff. So I come from the country where the school system was a little different. The school system had, the teachers had authority basically to restrain the kids in any way they can if they misbehave. So, and they were given favors by the parents. Parents, we never attend like this in what I come from, because we send the kids to school, they're always safe. There was no lockdowns, ever. There were little minus problems here and there, but lockdowns in school, 21st century in America, that can happen back in my country, but not in America. But obviously, it's happening in America. So I asked my girl just to write me a letter how she feels in school and what really happened. So I'm going to try to be quick as I can with my perfect English reading. So this is my oldest daughter, and this is her. Honestly, I never imagined myself walking the house of Greenfield High School. However, I always had in mind what good things have been said about the school during my pioneer, during my time at Pioneer. And as a former athlete, I was familiar with the energetic school spirit and the student body, although I hadn't officially attended a school until this year. I have been to many soccer and basketball games at Greenfield. Despite being the opponent or even labeled as rival, the energy of people brought to the school while spectating is unbeatable. What swayed me and two of my siblings to transfer was exactly that, the energy of school and the people. We wanted a fresh new charge in our environment as a former school, as our former school was dealing with the complications of its own. Would soccer and basketball be our favorite sport? We even had girls from Greenfield encouraging us to transfer. Now, here we are, as the regulations of the pandemic are coming to a calm, we finally get a chance to experience a daily culture at GHS. Majority of the time, I can say that I enjoy my school day thoroughly. It's such a refreshment from online learning from the, for the past one and a half years. As I come into school, I am welcomed by staff members with a warm good morning, hello, and it sets me in a calm mood. In addition to this, I have made tight bonds with a few other people here, and it's comforting to know and feel that I have people at school who are eager to see me, just as I'm eager to see them. However, since the start of the school year, I know we had been having our own problems with the student body. Following these problems are consistent shelters in places, which are necessary to ensure the safety of our students. My younger sister, Eldarina, who is an 8th grader, tells me every day how her classes have come to a pause because her peers don't behave in class. She says she feels unsafe with many of the unexpected shelters in place. She observing that her learning becomes interrupted and inconsistent. With that being said, it leads me to my experience today. What I experienced today emotionally and physically was very intense, as I was in close proximity to the situation. Before the situation escalated, the students had made their way down the hallway towards the café. Their voices gradually become louder and louder until they were shouting and eventually hit one of their crowd control poles, and three pieces come off of it. One of their peers tried to calm them down. They entered the café for about five minutes, then a group of them left down the hall, approaching the elevators. Minutes later, there was excessive, heart-wrenching, loud yelling and screaming, and the next thing you know, all the staff had literally ran to the situation and had issued a shelter in place. When I heard how loud it had gotten, I can honestly say that my heart dropped and started pounding a little faster. I felt my body quiver for a minute. I was in shock, because with everything else, what is happening so far, as a spectator and a student, this was something more. As an incident was being handled, kids from lunch had started to fill the café hall with adrenaline. Regardless of what happened, I think what has stood out to me the most is that this is no longer an emotionally safe or stable environment. This has triggered emotions I didn't even know I had. As for other students, how are they possibly going to feel safe? How are they going to go to sleep and wake up knowing that they will have to attend a school under circumstances like this? Everyone's hostile or even looking for another fight while others just want to go about their day. Enjoy the process of learning and leave school in peace. As humanity, we have undergone and are still going through an extensive process of the pandemic, and I believe it has caused us to stray away from the basic principles of morality. There is a lack of respect, patience, understanding, and compassion towards one another. At the end of the day, this is a community. This should be a community we are proud to be a part of, not one where we fear and disrespect one another. So like I said, the reason, the reason I get emotional is I am a kid of war. I came from the war country, and to have my three girls experiencing it in a peaceful country, it brings the anxiety back into me. It brings the fear.
Thank you. That was done.
So I really appreciate, and I would appreciate if we can get an officer back on. I was a business owner in Burnerstone for 12 years. I had cops in my restaurant because of people not behaving, people who were nice, they respected officers, we never had a problem. We don't need people who misbehave in a public places like this.
Thank you. That was three minutes for Abbas and three minutes for his daughter, too.
Madeline and Mackenzie.
You can pull up one of the other chairs.
Okay. Hi, I'm Madeline.
I'm Mackenzie.
And we're 9th graders at the high school. I want to keep this short and sweet, but I'm scared to go to school, and something needs to change. We can't, students can't keep living like this, and that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Go ahead. We just need you to state your name and the town you live in, and you have three minutes.
My name is Nate Tripp. I live in Greenfield. I'm a student of a 5th grader, a 3rd grader, a kindergartner, and one who will be coming, we think. We'll see how things go. I decided to speak just to share that my 5th grader is, he doesn't want to go to school anymore, and he doesn't feel safe. And I think the potential solutions, which all falls to you, has to do with staffing, and I don't necessarily think that, I know there are mixed feelings about the SRO, but I think that can be a wonderful resource, especially if the school system explains what that role can be, and that that can be a, it's not just a uniformed officer in the school, and what it will do. And I think we're also fortunate to live in a community where the police force is in touch with the community, and we have good people here. So my son doesn't want to go to school when he always wanted to go to school before, and we're looking at other options, and that really pains me to say, because we have moved here. What brought us to Greenfield in the first place was my wife as a teacher in the school system. I had time working for the district myself. I was one of you at one point, and so thank you for your work, by the way. I don't know what the solution is, except that there might be more people that you need to get. People need support. I think that SRO may be part of that equation, and I would encourage you to really think about that, because I have, I have three more coming, too, and if I end up moving my kids elsewhere, we're probably just going to keep them all going elsewhere. And we are invested. We moved here, I've started a business here. We want good things for Greenfield, but if we don't figure out how to address this, I think we're in trouble. So I would ask you to think hard, and I know that you've heard a lot tonight, so thanks for hearing me out.
Anyone else for public comment? President Ricketts, go ahead. Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you.
State your full name and the town you live in, please.
Penny Ricketts, council president. I live here in Greenfield. First of all, I know that you guys have a tough decision ahead of you. I can hear it's pretty divided about having SRO in the school. As a person of color, I'm going to tell you, I'm for an SRO in schools. I worked on the Common for Halloween, handing out candy, and the one thing that struck me was how many boys of color were dressed as police officers. That really meant a lot. And I know, if you think I don't know about what happens with police, I have a son who's 30-something years old. I absolutely know everything that could happen and did happen. But this is a strong community, and we work together. Do you think having an SRO in the schools and having this kind of support, this kind of community, that we're going to let anything or anyone step over the line? No, I think it's time that we work together. I don't want to see anybody choicing out. I don't want to see any teachers leaving. I'm a mother of a daughter who works at the middle school. She comes home and she gets into bed. It wouldn't be a big deal, except for it's only 4:00 in the afternoon. I have never seen her so zapped of energy in my whole life. It's worth it for her. She really loves these children. She takes it to heart. I like hearing about parents being in school, and some of these kids that are acting up, I would like their parents to be in these classes, too, sitting right next to their kids, so you don't have to relay the story about what they're doing. Let them be right there and let them witness it. Maybe we'll find out, well, maybe that's where it starts, but we have to do something. It has to be accountable from the child to the family. We cannot have all these good families disupset. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. Frank Court, go ahead.
Thank you.
Your name and the town you live in.
I'm Marguerite Reincourt, Greenfield. I'm going to first speak as a mom. I've already written letters, and I didn't get a response, but I'm going to tell you what happened today, because I've told my daughter, you text me every time. Today, she called. I saw my phone. I answered it, and she said, Mom, I'm scared. They just called the lockdown, and whoever called it sounded so scared. I'm scared. I said, stay where you are, and when it's done, I will call so you can go home. She does not feel safe. She doesn't want to go to school. I just want you to hear it. I've taught some of your children. You know me. I am so worried about our kids, and I am going to let her go home every time. She doesn't feel safe. She's worried about her friends. She's afraid to go to the bathroom. I don't know the solution, but if I need to come at my lunchtime every day to help, I will. I will be there. I just want you to really listen. I am heartsick. I am hearing from other students, I'm hearing from former families, can you tutor our kids? We want to take them out of school. They're not safe. So please hear us, this is so serious. This is my daughter's senior year, and she's a good kid. You know her, and she's petrified. So hear me. I'm very worried, and I will do anything. I will come, I will come to meetings, I will help, I will come at my lunch, anything. So please take this seriously. We all need to work together. I want, I want her to finish her school year, and every kid I've taught, and we're talking 25 years of teaching here. I am committed. I moved here. Now, like, I wish I had stayed where I was. So I just want you to know that it was Abbas's letter that I broke out in tears because his daughter's letter is what my daughter's saying to me on a daily basis. Thank you for listening.
It's your name and your town you live in. You have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Kathy Flynn. I live in Greenfield, and I have a sophomore at the high school. I just want to echo what Ms. Reincourt said. My daughter also texted me during that situation today, and her words were, Mom, I think it's really serious this time, because the woman who called the shelter in place was panicked. And she's texting me from school saying, I'm scared today. So I just wanted to echo that. And I also want to say that I think a school resource officer can work. If it's done properly, they can engage with students in a way that a police officer out in the community cannot. Ms. Patonode was at the school when my daughter graduated in 2018. I was in her office a couple times with the school resource officer and her, and my experiences were very positive. So it can be done well, and it doesn't have to be punitive or scare the kids.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? All right, well, I do thank everyone for their comments. We do hear you. For people who are following along at home, for those of you who didn't choose to speak or who have more to speak about, you can email us. You can find a direct way to communicate with us. I've spoken with people over Zoom and by phone, and I welcome that feedback, as does the rest of the school committee, and I appreciate everyone's honest comments tonight. It does make a difference in, in how we proceed, and we are, to quote the old cliche, "We are all in this together." And what I would like to do at this point, this is our item number four, is the report of our student representatives to the committee, and it's typically one of the highlights, or the highlight, of the meeting. And these folks have sat through a lot tonight that they probably didn't expect to hear, and I would like us to take a nice respite from all of this, because the next item on the agenda after that, we'll go right into discussing some of the things that we're working on at the middle school and the high school. So, I will turn it over now to Brielle, who I don't think we've met before. Am I right? Is this your first meeting, Brielle? Okay, so Brielle and Shane, Shane's an old hat. Hopefully, he's given you the rundown on how it works. You guys take it away, and you just hold down the button to make it turn green. Yep, and then you're live there.
Hi, so we'd like to begin our student report with student council. Student councils worked hard last month with planning all the school pep rallies and spirit week. The participation and spirit throughout the school was great. We saw a lot of people participating and putting in the effort to come together. The E-Board members visited Middleborough High Schools, High School on October 30th for an officer shop, where they got to meet and explore other students and their school's student councils. Planning for the upcoming pep rally is starting to take place, as well as group discussions about how we can make GHS a better place for all students and staff involved.
Next is, can you hear me? Okay, National Honor Society. So, on Wednesday, October 13th, we inducted 22 new members. I was one of them, so I missed the last meeting. They, along with the current members, were able to celebrate this great honor, along with their honored teachers, their parents, family, and friends. And Ms. Patnade for speaking. NHS also held a meeting with Dr. DeBarge and Ms. Patnade, where they discussed the issues and concerns they are having in the building and questions they have for them. So, that was yesterday. Key Club has been working with the Sandy Hook Say Something Foundation to spread positive messages throughout the school, specifically on like morning announcements. We have started to revamp the school's community closet for students to access clothing of their needs, so like they can go in and grab a jacket if they need. Some upcoming events that are being planned include the Turkey Trot, which we do every year, and the Festival of Trees.
AV Club has began meeting every Thursday after school to discuss all things audio and visual related in Mr. Leo Wolf's room.
Library Club has been meeting frequently in the library with Ms. Paul, like to discuss books and eat pizza. Recently, they watched the movie Words on Bathroom Walls and had a discussion about the movie.
Spanish Club is currently fundraising for their spring trip to Spain. If anybody is interested in supporting the club members in their efforts to fundraise for their trip, please see any member. There are a lot of holiday gift items to choose from for this fundraiser. These last couple of weeks have marked an end for many fall sports, including boys' and girls' soccer, football, field hockey, volleyball, golf, and cross country. Some of these sports still have championships to play, and others have drawn to an entire close. Congratulations to all fall sports athletes on an amazing season. Family ID is now open for all winter sports, including boys' and girls' basketball, cheerleading, and ice hockey. You can go to familyid.com to sign up. Practice starts on November 29th, and practice times will be posted soon. Good luck to all winter sports athletes.
Starting midway through last week, GHS implanted a new bathroom policy, changing which bathrooms can be used and when and how many people may use the bathrooms. Currently on the eighth grade bathrooms and those in the English hallway are open all day for student use, and the cafeteria bathrooms are open only during the lunch blocks. Each bathroom now has a monitor who keeps track of who is inside the bathroom and only allowing two at a time. Any other students must wait in the, in the line until there is an opening. And if a student is out of class for longer than 15 minutes, then their teacher must call the office and notify them on the student's absence. There is currently no limit to the number of times that a student may leave class. Administration is working on being able to open all the bathrooms, and there's also passes now, so we have to sign out in the classrooms and take a pass to go to the bathroom.
We would also, to close our report, like to bring to light some of the issues in our school and discuss it from a student perspective. There's a number of challenges that our district is facing, and although we are aware that these issues have been discussed, we would like to talk about them from the views of a student. We're here to give our report of the school, and that means talking about both the good and the bad of what's going on. It's important to bring everything to light, and we want to make sure it's heard from everybody's perspective. To begin, I want to talk about masks, which are an integral part of everybody's safety. But it's apparent that there is a blatant disregard from some students about these policies that have been put in place. When students do not wear their mask properly or refuse to do so, it's putting those around them at risk, as well as their families. Any members of that family who are not, or who they are in close contact with, who cannot be vaccinated or have not yet been vaccinated, are being potentially exposed, and that endangers them. I have family members that are very vulnerable to COVID, and I'm certain that I am not alone in that. The disregard for masks is putting people at risk, and although there have been, there has been a new warning system put in place, at least in the high school, I feel that the students not wearing masks will ignore these warnings, and in the end, it will leave us just where we started. Without the proper staff enforcement that we need, and without any truly weighted consequences that students will care about, we won't get anywhere, and our mask mandates will be pushed back month after month. I know it's a big topic of conversation, and I know that these new policies have been put in place, but as students, we've seen responses of those around us to any new policies put in place as something more focused around anger towards the new rules, rather than any willingness to comply. They feel there is no actual weight to their punishments, and therefore, they are unwilling to follow these guidelines. In our school, there's been a number of behavioral issues among students that have become increasingly frequent. Whether it's a lack of consequences for students not wearing their mask properly, or fights breaking out between students seemingly regularly now, our school is beginning to feel less safe. We've had a number of conflicts among students that have resulted in numerous shelters and places. These lead to police often showing up, which leads to anxiety and fear among students who have little to no idea what's happening. The only information shared being rumors. The presence of police can trigger anxiety for many students, and their unannounced presence only makes that worse. When there's no communication, people can only become confused and afraid, because they have no idea what situation they're faced with. In regards to the masks, that can only be handled if we are more serious about enforcing them. When someone isn't wearing it, staff need to call them out. That shouldn't be the jobs of the students in that class. Too many times, students have had to be the ones who speak to other students about not wearing masks, and staff just sit by and seem to not do any effort to change that. Not wearing your mask properly a certain number of times should amount to more than just to call the parents, because in the end, it will have no major effect for a majority of students. Mr. Cavalo is currently working with the high school art teachers to incentivize students to display their own masks ideas, and we think that is a step in the right direction towards getting students to wear their masks. But there's still a lot of work needed to be done, and a lot of strides we need to take still. We know that you're working hard to address these issues, and we appreciate that work. But as students, we're still noticing these issues around us every day, and it's growing increasingly frequent, and we want to raise that awareness. Thank you.
Can I also speak on the incident that happened today? Is that okay, from my perspective? So, I was in period five, which is alternates with lunch, which you all probably know, and it was around 10 minutes before I went to lunch, they called a shelter-in-place. And I don't know who did it, but she sounded like there was like a shooter in the building. It was absolutely terrible. She sounded very panicky, and it freaked everyone out. My class paused for the rest of the remaining period because we were so scared. And that shelter-in-place ended after around three minutes. So, when I was walking to lunch, I was in the hallway, and I saw a bunch of girls screaming at each other. So, I'm like, this didn't end. They didn't put an end to it. So, when I got to the cafeteria, there was another one. And just the fact that they didn't, they ended it too early is what scares me. Like, I feel like I walked in the middle of the problem. And a lot of other students felt that way too, and it was just, it was not okay. And then we remained in the cafeteria, and I was like, how are we safe in the cafeteria? Like, there's a bunch of students. We're not stopping anything. It just didn't feel like anything was changing. And there was no staff in the cafeteria. There was, I know one of the lunch ladies had to go and address a problem that was happening at the cafeteria, because there was no staff to do it. There was no one monitoring the bathroom either, so it's like, we need staff, because more prob, like what if something erupted in the cafeteria as we were in a shelter-in-place, and all the other staff were worrying about that? And that's what scares me.
Thank you, Brielle. Thank you, Shane. We always appreciate your report. Congratulations on National Honor Society. Terrific. And your opinions on some of the things you've heard about tonight are also greatly, greatly appreciated. So, thank you for having the courage and the ability to speak about it. Okay, so we are on to the reports from the administration, and first up would be ASKP, Assistant Superintendent Karen Patnade. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think all of you have my report in your packet that you can read and review. November 2nd, we had a PD day, and I just wanted to update you on what everyone was doing. We had some curriculum writing in SEL, as well as in ELA and math. At the high school level, they worked on content area. Michael Browning and Gina Johnson and I continue our efforts in the professional learning network for principals, and I've begun my supervision of them by doing site visits with them.
I'm going to ask folks that while you're leaving, it's fine to leave. Please keep your voices to a minimum. Thank you.
And lastly, just an update on the Beacon Learning Experience. They are working with the city of Greenfield and Hoxton Reed, and they're doing an art pop-up and working hard to create some of their own originals. And they're going to have the downtown center at GCC, the first floor, open, and it's going to be the weekend of December 10th. So, they're very excited to do some of their entrepreneurial work and showcase what they've been working on. So, I invite everyone in the community, as well as all of you, to join, because they're really proud of a lot of the work they've done. And I'm going to be brief, because I know we want to get to Dr. DeBarge's report and address the concerns that we've heard here this evening.
Do we have any questions for the assistant superintendent from the school committee at this point? Okay, thank you, ASKP. We're on to the superintendent's report. Percy, go ahead.
Okay. So, thank you, and I first want to echo the fact that folks who were speaking said a few things that are utmost in my priorities. One, all of our students deserve and are entitled to be safe and feel comfortable at school, and the behaviors that we have been seeing since school started are not acceptable to continue in our schools. We are all working for the benefit of the students, and I want to provide an update for the committee about the things that have occurred and things that are continuing, so that we can try to address what clearly is an unacceptable situation.
And I'm going to interrupt you for one second, just to let people know that you've provided an update in writing as well, and if it's-
I will end up amending that based on some-
Okay. And if it's, is it already posted with the materials from the meeting tonight?
No.
But it will be after?
Yes.
Yeah, so it will be available in writing to people as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. So, our faculty and staff has been doing incredible work in an extremely challenging circumstance prevented by, presented by returning to school after the pandemic. We have been, as others have noted, dealing with extreme staffing issues. As a matter of fact, I spoke with the deputy commissioner from the Department of Education, and the first thing that he said when he spoke was, "Everybody across the Commonwealth is dealing with staffing shortages and increased student behavioral challenges." It doesn't make it acceptable here, but it does highlight that we are among many districts that are seeing the result of the pandemic and how it's affecting our communities and our students. We did fill the assistant, in terms of the high school, we did fill the second assistant principal's position. She was able to start at the end of last week, so that is extremely helpful. We have added another school counseling position, who will, that person will also begin next week. We have added additional hall monitor positions, and those folks hopefully will be able to support adding restrooms. The restrooms are limited to ensure that the students who want to go into the bathrooms are able to do so in peace and quiet, and not to be concerned that they're disrupted. We recognize that more restrooms need to be opened, and so, we're diligently working to get additional staff. One of the challenges we're facing district-wide at this point is when we post positions, sometimes staff from one building applies to the other, and when we accept that transfer request, we create a vacancy in another place. So, we are moving the challenge in some respects. However, we talk about where the needs are and what position may be more easily filled, and then work around those types of questions. But I want to share, we do have that scenario happening where the vacancy is moving. I have posted for a permanent high school principal's position. Mr. Cavalo is acting, as you folks probably remember. My hope is that we would be able to get a qualified applicant who would be able to start right after the winter break. That is the hope. If that is to occur, then my plan would be to retain three associate principals for the remainder of this year to support the building. We have added a stipend for the restorative practice facilitator, which Mr. Pratt has filled. I was able to meet with him today after the meeting referenced by Brielle, that Karen and I met with the National Honor Society and anti-racism student group yesterday. And based on the concerns that they raised, which were echoed by families this evening, Mr. Pratt and Karen and I will be working together to get structures in place where students are able to share the social-emotional pieces that they believe need to be addressed. And then we will identify materials and a social-emotional curriculum that will match those needs, rather than identifying a canned program and using that. So, that process has recently started. I also have meetings with two other student groups. One is the social justice group, which I will be meeting with on Friday, and then the anti-racism group has requested a follow-up meeting, which is being scheduled. So, because of the staffing shortages, not just in our general education programming and administrative and counseling services, we have also been updating our special education programming at the high school. That has needed, I don't think it's a surprise to the committee to know that we've needed to do some work on the services for our most needy students, and that is in process already. We have focused on using our handbook to the most optimal method possible. The student handbook, which is in place now, and apparently had not been prior. And there is language that allows for progressive discipline for students who are chronically not meeting the code of conduct and are not responding to supports that are being put into place. Our last desire is to exclude students from an educational setting, but at some points, accessing the resources we have through the handbook is the most, is the last resort that we have, and we will need to do that more effectively than has been done. I know that there are questions and concerns raised about the use of shelters in place. I do want to clarify, I know some folks had used the term lockdown, and I want to just highlight the difference of those, in that shelters in place and lockdowns both. But shelters in place have been used for a number of years as part of typical safety and security protocols. And when a shelter-in-place is called, it is intended to ask staff and students to stay where they- to stay where they are and to not be in the public spaces because something is happening that requires the hallways to be clear. At times, it can be medical. It can be related to a mental health issue, and it can be related to student-specific situations. Regardless, it still can be scary to hear that. We haven't been practicing any of our security protocols since March of 2020, and we are working with our state trooper and Sergeant Green from the Greenfield Police Department to retrain all of our staff. And then after the new year, after the start of the new calendar year, to work with our students to start doing some of those regular practices because right now, it's more scary than... You know, it's significant. We're using a shelter because we're dealing with some significant issues, but I think it feels even more significant because it has been so... It's foreign again after being out of that situation for so long. There have been eight shelters in place at Greenfield High School since the start of school related to the three issues that I spoke to, you know, spoke about. And again, I am not trying to minimize the fact that they cause anxiety and that they are stress-inducing, but I do believe it's helpful for people to realize how many we have had. And I do know clearly that we need to communicate more effectively and more quickly with parents when student situations have occurred and we've utilized some of our security protocols. Communication is one of the things that was addressed when I interviewed, and all of you made it clear it was a concern. Staff and parents that I met with as part of the interview... Excuse me, process made it clear it was a concern, and it is something that we are working hard to address. But it's taking time to change patterns of how we've communicated previously. The Greenfield Police Department has been a valuable partner with the public schools. School staff has been able to address the situations where the police department has been called. As we build new procedures and provide new resources, staff and other members of the community will still continue to rely on the resources that they are comfortable with, including calling the police, until our new resources and procedures and protocols become part of our normal response. We are transitioning, but that doesn't mean at a time when people have increased anxiety or it is a stressful and concerning situation, people use the resources that they are most comfortable with. And right now, that includes calling the police, and we're transitioning to using resources that we're increasing in our schools to address some of those student behaviors. But I would like to share how much we appreciate the relationship and the support from the Greenfield Police. They have been exceptionally responsive. At the middle school, we are continuing to deal with staffing shortages. We have heard frequently that our entire fifth-grade team has resigned. I'd like to clarify, that is not accurate. We do have a number of staff who... Who are out or will be out on anticipated or unanticipated medical leaves. We have one staff person who left the middle school and transferred to the high school. And we will have one more staff who is leaving at the winter break to move out of state. We have posted that position, and our goal is to have the ability to transition staff prior to one's departure. We did not have an Assistant Principal at the start of the year, but we did hire Mr. Pratt, who started at the end of September, which has been greatly helpful in addressing discipline referrals. We have added counseling staff to the middle school, including one staff from CSO. They added two staff to our district. One is at the elementary, one is at the middle school. And we will be... As a matter of fact, we posted today for an additional adjustment counselor at our middle school with the goal that they will focus on supporting students in our fifth grade or realigning caseloads so that students who are struggling, primarily in fifth grade, will have more ability to access counseling services or supports. We did expect there to be some challenging behaviors, especially in fifth grade as students transition to a new school. But certainly, there have been... There's been an increase in what we would have wanted to see. We knew coming back from a trauma period that student behaviors would be challenging. I know I had talked at city council about some of the impact of trauma and increased anxiety and stress and aggression, withdrawal, eating issues, sleeping issues, all being possible impacts of trauma. And we are seeing all of that in our students. In the past two weeks, we have had 56 discipline reports written up at the middle school, and four of them were related to physical behavior. And that doesn't mean students are punching each other. It can be things like one student slapping another. I mean, it's not acceptable to slap anybody, but in terms of the level of interaction between students, four of the write-ups of the 56 were related to physical behavior. We are continuing to work with the teachers regarding ways to respond to inappropriate behavior. I was able to meet with the fifth grade for a fairly significant amount of time on November 2nd, and they spoke about the desire to have increased training on restorative practice and trauma-informed care. So, I have already begun working on accessing resources for that. And I was able to walk through the middle school today and had the pleasure of being in 10 to 12 different classrooms at all grade levels. And there are some students who need more support to learn, but many, most of our students are learning at the middle school. It was a fairly typical day, and I'm not suggesting that the students who have been described as struggling are not. I know they are. But I also would like to share that we do have the vast majority of our students who are learning and being very productive today. So, in addition, I'm applying for a mental health grant to support additional counseling and therapeutic learning center support. The counselors would be middle school, high school, and then the TLC support would be at all of the elementary, as well as middle school and high school, TLC's Therapeutic Learning Center. So, staff would be available to assist students who need a break from class, who are feeling heightened in their emotion and need someone to process that with, who just need to be out of the environment where they're feeling overwhelmed and exceptionally challenged and not able to make good decisions. Right now, we have people in those positions, but there are not enough of them to meet the student need. So, we are working at all levels with individual families to provide additional supports or resources for students who are significantly struggling. And, you know, at this stage, Karen and I have signed on to a DUCY... I'm sorry, it's not DUCY. The recruitment, staffing recruitment.
Oh, it's Mass Reach with...
Thank you. Mass Reach to participate in resources and programming to recruit staff, especially those staff of color. So, we are engaged in those activities. A representative from a staffing group will be meeting with a superintendent's group in the upcoming weeks so that we can talk about facilitating staffing across school districts, especially positions like our instructional assistants, where most of our openings are. If we have... If you check out our school spring, you'll notice a significant number of openings. So, we are making some headway in terms of trying to get adequate staff in the buildings. And we will continue to work with the student groups to get their voice on what they need, especially at the high school. It was exceptionally helpful for me to meet with students yesterday, and I will continue to do so. The elementary schools did experience some increased challenging behaviors at the beginning of school, but I am pleased to say that school is pretty much going as normal at our early learning center and at our three elementary schools. Doesn't mean perfect, but typical, what we would expect for our students. So, elementary is moving along, and most of our students at middle and high school are doing exactly what we need them to do. So, we're continuing to put supports in place to minimize the impact of negative behaviors and then to address the students who continue to have these challenging behaviors.
Chair Poyetty?
Go ahead.
I feel strongly that, if you don't mind and would allow it here, that any one of us on the school committee who heard from these parents tonight, and I'm grateful for that. Thank you to those of you who are still here. Please pass it on to the rest of the parents to speak about what we heard tonight for a few minutes. I don't know if anybody else wants to join me or not, but I would like to continue then, just to say thank you again to the parents who spoke and to the teachers and to the staff. It's different when you come to a school committee and speak to us directly than when you send us an email, and I'm not saying stop sending the emails, but it is important to hear you and to hear the emotion in your voice or the joy in your voice, depending on what it is that you're talking about. Tonight was a very emotional evening. It pains me, as a former school committee chairperson, with children who grew up in these schools as well, to hear that parents want to... Are making that difficult choice to leave the public schools, this public school system and go to another system. I don't want to see that happen either. And I trust that we are working. I'm not saying we're not working towards this because I know you are, and you and I have discussed this. But sometimes things just don't happen as fast as they should. And it's difficult to get things done when you're constantly interrupted. So, I'm asking parents to be somewhat patient with us as we begin to figure this out. But mostly, I'm very grateful to have heard from all of you. And I do read every email that comes, both to the mayor's office, and there are many, not just on this issue but other issues, and to my school committee email. I don't always have the time to respond, and I'm guessing that many of the other school committee members don't either. But it doesn't mean that we haven't read them. And from time to time, I have responded. So, thank you for your discussions and your ideas this evening. And I'm really hoping we can make some changes more quickly.
Thank you, Mayor Wayna Gardner. I do think, as you said, it's appropriate to have a discussion. And for any one of the school committee members who would like to speak to these issues, to what we heard tonight, to the superintendent's report, ASKP's report, please, this is the time to actually have that discussion. Member Karen, go ahead.
I, again, want to thank everybody. I'm not really an emotional person, but I was moved to tears a couple of times tonight listening to my educators be that upset. I don't know what the solutions are. I'm ready to be like, "All right, I resign. I'll go be an IA. Whatever you need me to do, I'm ready. Let's go." I only have two months left anyway. I just want to know what we should... Like, I hear people asking for an SRO as parents and community members, but I didn't hear a lot of educators asking for it. And so, that's what I'm wondering... I'm not advocating for or against. I'm just trying to respond to what was said to us tonight. I would like to hear more from our educators if they think that that's the right direction to go in or if, in this transitional period, we're trying to up-staff all of our behaviorists, all of our counselors, get them into the classrooms, get them into the hallways, if having a larger presence would be helpful. I don't know that it would. I don't know that it wouldn't. I'm not an educator, and I'm not well-versed in this. I do hear our other educators being upset about the thought, and I get that. And as a few years ago, when we decided to end the program, and I was on the committee, the subcommittee that started that, the research did point to what they're saying, but it also wasn't amid a pandemic with all of this other stuff. And I know that it's easy for us to forget that the children having a hard time are children, and they are struggling, and that... I asked my two high schoolers today, after getting all these emails, "What would you think about a SRO in school?" And one said, "I don't know. It'd be fine." The other one said, "No, I'd be terrified just to have a cop in the school." And they're just white boys, right? Like, they don't have any experience with this. And so, I was like, "Oh, I didn't expect that answer from you because you haven't had a negative experience." My emotions are still getting to me, and I like that we're talking about it because, as you noted in here and you heard coming in, and we've all heard for years, fifth grade is a tough transitional year. Any transitional year is difficult, fifth grade, eighth grade, kindergarten. They're all difficult. So, it's kind of interesting that now we're getting a little bit more attention to that. Fifth grade year is very difficult, and it has always been difficult, but now it's worse, and now more people are affected by it. So, it's, I guess, a good time for us to make some changes where we need to. I guess I just would love to hear more from educators about what they think they need, if that means we need to have educator mass email to us or some sort of representation to a meeting where we just talk about that. I'm open to those ideas, whatever. Yeah, like, whatever we... Because the educators are the ones, the administrators are the ones in the room. They'll know what they need more than I do. I have no idea. I'll go hang out in the classroom, but I don't think I'll be that helpful, mostly just embarrass my kids, let's be fair.
Thank you, Member Karen. Other school committee members like to speak? Member Hollins, go ahead.
I also want to thank the people that spoke. I want to particularly thank the people that wrote. There were some really wonderful letters in terms of how people were looking at the situation. And one of the... Two of the letters that stuck with me were the letter from John Lund talking about, you know, he'd been in the school district when 25% of the students left, how hard it was to recover and how important it is to really step in and address situation, which I agree completely. And also thank Francesca Pasaglia. Her letter was different because she said, "When a student acts out, has an extreme acting-out experience in school, we need to look at not only what that student did and how to respond to it, but what was the precipitating behavior? And that's critical when you're looking at students that act out. What happened? What happened before that that created that situation?" So, I really appreciated her perspective. I appreciated the superintendent's comments about the helpfulness of the police department and why, you know, why people are resorting to that as opposed to using in-house measures that might work if they were in place. And I want to comment on a couple of things that Nate Tripp and Penny Ricketts said. They're longtime residents of Greenfield. They know people in the police force well. And I just want to say, when we had an SRO during my tenure, they were plainclothes, they had an office. And what I learned, it isn't considered. Is we have a lot of students that have had trauma in their home and are in dangerous situations in their life outside of school, and they have nowhere to go. We... I won't get into that, but when we had a resource officer, there were students, not everyone, but there were students who could share what was going on in their lives outside of school. And I always had the sense from the administrators that was a really helpful support. We always had plainclothes. We always had plainclothes people that were, we talked. Anyway, my point is that there's a lot of ways to look at an SRO, and whoever said we should really talk about the different ways those positions can be defined. It's an important conversation to have because there are ways that an SRO can provide support to students that are in trouble outside of school, in their families or in their communities. So I just wanted to say, it's a complicated situation, and I was glad to hear all the things that are taking place. And I can appreciate, you know, people come into school, all of us, we have different experiences that influence how we respond to fear and risk and what traumatic experiences in our lives we bring to situations. So we really do need to have these kind of conversations to figure out solutions that work for everyone and make sense. My thinking is our first duty, the school district is a duty of care, we have to make sure people are safe, that comes before anything else in my book. So I appreciate all the efforts, and everyone's coming out to talk about their concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Secretary Johnson Musad, go ahead.
I also would like to thank everybody who came out tonight and everyone who's written us an email. It really does matter to us to hear you share your personal stories and the stories you're hearing from your kids in the schools and your experiences as teachers. We aren't in the schools every day, obviously, we can't be, and so it's really important for us to hear your stories and to know how you're thinking and feeling about the situation. I especially want to appreciate the students who spoke tonight and who wrote and had their parents read what they wrote. We really love hearing your stories, and we know that adult meetings can be an intimidating place, and it takes a lot of courage and thought to share your thoughts with us. And we would love to hear more of it if more of you want to write and communicate through your student representatives. We want to hear what's going on for you from your perspective, and it's wonderful to hear about all the wonderful events that are happening, but it's also wonderful to hear about your concerns and your problems as well. So thank you for that. I think we talked about the students all having kind of been through a traumatic event together with COVID, and I think that's true for all of us, for the adults as well. And it's really important for us to be thinking and working through problems methodically and carefully and sometimes slowly, even though we want a response right away. I think there are some, there are responses that are happening right away, and then there are ones that are going to require us to really think thoughtfully. I'm kind of reminded of a Star Trek episode where there was an immediate danger and what the people wanted Captain Kirk to act very quickly, and he was taking time and they were getting frustrated. He said, the less time there is, the more you have to, you have to use the time wisely. So I was very reassured by the superintendent's report, because it just sounds like you are thinking and working through things very methodically and carefully. And so that was my point tonight of getting choked up, was just the care and concern and the reflecting back that these are problems and they are unacceptable, and these are the steps we're taking, this is the process we're taking to address it. So, and I think all of us are committed to that, and whatever you need from us as a school committee, please let us know, and we will be there and we'll do what needs to be done. So, thank you, everybody.
It's just you and me, Member Wall. You ready? Go ahead.
I'm ready. In our search for a new superintendent, we forgot to ask for a magic wand. So probably there's someone out there who has a magic wand that we didn't interview, but please remember that Dr. DeBarge started the week before school started in September. So she's been here September, October, and this much of November, and you can't fix everything in that much, that short a period of time. So I hope that the community will rally around her and help her through this period, because it's really, really hard, and no child should ever be afraid in school. And Dr. DeBarge doesn't want them afraid. We don't want them to be afraid, but it's not an easy answer. And if anyone in the community has suggestions that you think would be helpful, I'm sure Dr. DeBarge would meet with you and go over anything that you have that you can suggest that would be helpful. And if you have a magic wand, if you would bring it, she could use it, please. But thank you all for telling us what's going on. It really is heartbreaking to know that children are afraid, and that's something that's not acceptable, and we really will do everything we possibly can to solve this. We just can't solve it tonight, unfortunately.
Thank you, Member Wall, and thank you all for being so articulate. I haven't learned in 18 months how to talk well with a mask on, so I am going to take it off as well, I'm speaking, and I'm not going to go over what everyone else has already said. The things that I want to point to as a part of this discussion are really just two things. We went over while y'all sat here, and people at home were like, why are we doing this? The ESER funds, this is the money we're getting from the federal government for schools because of the pandemic. And basically, the experts were all correct when they said, beginning in spring of 2020, over a year ago, our kids are going to be traumatized when they return to school. And that is exactly what happened. And the money that we've received from the federal government so far, that's outlined here in terms of how we are spending it, a chunk, a huge chunk of it is earmarked for learning loss, what was lost during the pandemic, and putting supports in place to fix that. And learning loss is not just academic, what's happening in the classroom. And so we are putting those supports into place. The schools are not immune from staffing issues, just like restaurants, just like school bus drivers and other types of industries where many of the workers are hourly and what we would call unskilled. And it is incredibly difficult to advertise for a position in the schools and have the only applicants be folks who already work in the schools. We can't address that. We have tried different ways and different strategies, not only for hiring, but also for reorganizing to be able to meet needs with less staff. So this ESER money, this is four, sorry, four-plus million dollars that we've mapped out how we are going to spend it. And these issues that we are dealing with in our schools are largely because of the adjustment needed to come back from the pandemic. And think about, I think about my own adjustment, and some days I'm amazed that I actually make it to my office every day and that I actually can hold it together. And I'm astounded by the things we all are doing to try and return to something recognizable as to what we had before. And the other piece I want to just briefly touch on is to recognize the discussion around the school resource officer, the SRO. And the first thing, because I do love politics, and I do love history, and I do work quite a bit with our state legislators, is to make sure we point out that while we were all shut down for the pandemic, the SRO law, the Mass General law that covers it, did change. The first thing that changed was it said that we don't have to have one anymore. Until 2020, it said you have to have one, and there wasn't leeway there. What's happened now is they say, you don't have to have one. However, if you do have an SRO in your schools, there's a very specific process for putting it into place that involves a memorandum of understanding between the chief of police and the superintendent of schools that covers a huge swath of items that you might even not think about, including what they will wear, what the uniform will be of the school resource officer. And so I would encourage my school committee members to take a look at the Mass General law, and I also can get it posted, I'm sure, as a part of, for people who are interested, as a part of either the superintendent's update or somewhere else with our materials, so that folks can see what we, the work we would need to do to put a school resource officer in place. And I'll leave it at that in terms of my comments, it's more than I wanted to say, and just again, reiterate to everyone who's given us feedback that we appreciate it and we're so glad that folks are, that care enough to come and talk to us about what we can do together. So thank you all for that.
Chair, could I follow on your community and your SRO conversation?
Go ahead.
I do, I have, last few weeks, talked regularly with Chief Hague about this. There are certainly models that can be followed that don't involve the SRO that you might have, as Amy explained, thought of a few years ago. Actually, a few years ago, as Dr. Hollins mentioned, they were plainclothes and were more like that fifth, what is it, that 12th man, that 12th woman, that wing person, whatever it is, to the counselors. So our community support officers are trained mental health workers, and we have several of them. I think an entire shift of them were at the high school today. So think about that. An entire shift of the Greenfield Police Department was at the high school today, which meant if anything else was going on in Greenfield that needed a police officer, there was not one there because they were at the high school. So we really can't have that happening on a regular basis. But our community support officers are, as I mentioned, trained mental health professionals. And our police officers are trained in mental health as well, and in critical incident, they get critical incident training too, all of which goes to being able to analyze from their view as professionals what the situation is and what the appropriate level of response is. So I'm appealing to what Chair Poetti said, and said, yes, let's educate ourselves about what could happen if we can afford it. And I'm delighted that the ESER money is being spent so well towards a lot of that learning loss, and that means also the mental health aspects of the learning loss.
Thank you, Mayor Weida Gardner. Any last comments from the committee? How about over here? Do you all want to talk again?
I would be happy to do research for the committee.
Turn your microphone on.
I forget. Given the Mass General law and the training requirements and the comments that the mayor made, if the committee would like, I would be happy to do research on the current state in Massachusetts, if the chief is interested in the MOU, what the, all the alternatives are or not. But instead of all of you doing, I'm happy to gather whatever information you folks would like and send it out to you for review, if you choose.
Secretary Johnson Musad, go ahead.
I think that our decision as a school committee to not staff the school resource officer was a significant one with a lot of public comment and a lot of deliberation. And so I appreciate the chair for welcoming folks' comments about the school resource officer, even though it's not on the agenda and we still need a second reading of our public comment policy to welcome that. But my concern is just wanting to have it on an agenda for us to deliberate and make a decision before we start investing resources and stepping, you know, farther down that road, so.
I completely agree with that, Secretary Johnson, who said, I do think we need to be planful and have an actual agenda item. And actually, I do think, just to clarify about the agenda item piece, the agenda item under the superintendent's report for update regarding services and programming at GMS and GHS is what covers school resource officer. So we got an inkling from the emails that people might talk about school resource officer tonight, so, yeah, we're covered in that regard. But you're absolutely right, it should be an agenda item, we should have a process. And, Member Hollins, go ahead.
I just want to make a quick comment. If memory serves, I think the chief Hague was, started his career as a school resource officer, and my recollection is he's a very good wordsmith and has spent a lot of time looking at these agreements. So I think whatever the decision is finally, he'll be a really helpful collaborator.
Member Karen?
Again, I'm advocating for it to be on an agenda, and I'm not, I'm really reserving decision on it for a little bit because I hadn't really considered it much, but we did have a standing MOU already, and it did live up to a lot of the changes in the law because we had had one for years, and it's something I had worked on. So that resource is available to find somewhere on the internet.
I will do my best to find it.
With people who know how to do technology, not named me.
I will do my best to ask Ms. Rice to find it.
Other comments from the school committee? Okay, so we will work towards an agenda item or two around this for likely our next meeting because of the importance of moving forward. Okay, so we are at Report of the Chair, because I haven't talked enough. Okay, so I have a few things, I will be quick. Usually I give up my report, but we just have an election here in Greenfield, and I want to recognize all of the folks that ran for office. To give your service as an elected official is an honor and a privilege and something that is, I'm grateful that there was a race for school committee, let me put it that way. And I want to recognize Glenn, Secretary Glenn Johnson Musad, who's won reelection, congratulations, as well as our two new school committee members that will start in January. And I do apologize, I don't write anything down, but I did have to write their last names down because I want to call her Marini, but it's Catherine Martini, and Elizabeth Daniv, I believe is how you pronounce it, and we're, again, looking forward to having them join us. And I also want to, we will do more of this in December, but recognize Member Hollins, who also ran for reelection and was unfortunately not successful and will be leaving us after next, after the December meeting. And you have been on school committee for a decade, is that right?
I think it might be six years.
Just six years? Okay, all right, I'll give you that. We didn't know the last time, and we got as far as like 15 years, and we knew that wasn't possible, so I-
But then I worked for this system for six years, so I think I have 12 years.
Okay, okay. So grateful for your service and your willingness to run again. Member Karen, first time we have a vacancy because someone leaves early, you're going to get reappointed to the school committee. That's all I have to say about that. And, okay, I have a couple other things, because actually, we have some pretty cool stuff going on in the schools, if people didn't know. Our field hockey team was Western Mass champs. Did you all know that? Woo, 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 right? And boys soccer. I'm so glad, I knew that too.
Sorry, I was just excited.
Yes, yes. Boys soccer made the playoffs, and it's been like, someone said they thought it had been at least 15 years since boys soccer had been in the playoffs. And they unfortunately had to play Sevis, their first game that always beats them, and so their first playoff game, they did lose. Montenegro, they know how it feels in Montenegro to lose on the World Cups, you know, qualifying stage, yeah. That's me in a barz here. And then it's a little maybe unconventional, but Belcher Town Girl Soccer is still in the playoffs, and they have a very proud mom who is superintendent of our schools, and Jill is the, one of the goalies, yes, on the Belcher Town team, and they're, they'll probably be- And Jill is one of the goalies, yes, on the Belcher Town team, and they'll probably be playing in the snow, is what we talked about.
They're in the final eight now.
Awesome. Final eight, so that's semifinals, right? Yeah, yeah. There we go.
Christmas playoffs, yeah.
Christmas playoffs. So, no, there's some cool stuff going on.
I've got one to add. West Cross Country Boy Team is going to Western Mass this weekend, and they are likely to qualify for state's finger scratch.
Awesome.
I'd love to run in the snow. That sounds fun. They're getting real close to the snow and the running, too. I don't know.
Running in the snow. Is there really anything better than running in the...
There's a whole lot of things.
Okay. And I'm going to also thank the Greenfield Police Department as the final piece in my chair's report for being... Oh, it's not the final piece because Penny wasn't in the room. Congratulations, Penny, on your reelection and being unopposed. President Ricketts. And then, Greenfield Police Department, they've been a wonderful support for us in the schools, and I just want to recognize that as well. They've been real team players for us, and we are grateful for that. And that is the chair's report. We can do subcommittee reports, and I have to be honest, things have been a little busy, so I've lost track a little bit of which subcommittees we need. So, Personnel Collective Bargaining, well, yeah, now's the time to escape, right? Because it's really getting boring now. Thank you all. We are not in any way offended if you leave because it's really boring. Okay, so Personnel Collective Bargaining, we will be voting tonight on agreement with our cafeteria workers that has already been ratified by them.
Mr. Robert is here to assist.
John's here. Excellent. Okay. So, that's the report from Personnel Collective Bargaining. Safety and Facilities, did we have anything to report?
Nothing really to report. We did need to talk about some needs, but they're really all sort of, you know, a little bit still, so there's nothing...
Nothing to report, huh? Okay. Policy and program, you know, Glenn, I realized as we were sitting here that we were supposed to have a second reading likely for... Yeah, and that's not on the agenda. So, totally my fault for missing it, but our second reading will be in December for the items that we missed this month. We've had a lot going on, like I said, so that's totally my fault that that is not on there.
I'll just ask if, for whatever reason, if we happen to have an extra special meeting between now and then. I can't imagine how that would happen, but if it does happen...
I think we will.
Maybe we can put it on that agenda.
I do anticipate we will have a meeting before our December regular meeting, and we'll do it then. Thank you. Okay. So, item number seven on the agenda, unless there's anything else about subcommittees. We're good. Okay. The 2223 school year calendar and Columbus Day. The issue, I thought we'd already agreed to change it to Indigenous Peoples' Day, but we have not, and we should have a discussion about this. I would like to entertain a motion to start to change, beginning with the 2223 school year calendar, change the name of the October holiday to be Indigenous Peoples' Day for all calendars moving forward.
So moved.
That was Secretary Johnson Musad and a second.
Second. Mayor Weidergartner.
Mayor Weidergartner and Member Wall. And discussion. Mayor?
Well, I read one letter today, and that was it, wanting to keep it at Columbus Day.
Yes, we did have feedback. One person had connected with us on this issue requesting we keep it at Columbus Day. Do we have other comments? Member Hollins?
Just what is the city's policy going to be? If you know.
We don't have one at the moment.
It is a holiday.
Yeah, it's a holiday. That's it. It's a holiday, and we refer to it as the holiday.
You call it Columbus Day still?
No, we do not.
You do not? You call it Indigenous Peoples' Day?
We don't have a specific policy on that at this point in time.
It's just a state holiday that your workers get off.
It's called the October Holiday. That's not a value choice by any means. It just is, as you say, there's been a lot going on, and it didn't occur to us to change it, other than to not call it Columbus Day.
Okay. Secretary Johnson Musad?
I want to speak in favor of changing the name from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I think, you know, growing up, I was the product of 1980s education, and we learned that Columbus discovered America, and they met the natives, and there was Thanksgiving. And obviously, our education system and our consciousness as a country has been evolving since then, and we have been trying to face some of the harms that were done by people from Europe coming here, killing indigenous people, taking their land, spreading disease that resulted in mass death and destruction. It's a very, very, you know, strange thing to have a day of celebration for the person who kind of initiated all of that. I think at times, it's been connected with Italian pride. I have Italian heritage. That's not how I especially want to celebrate the wonderful strengths of the Italian people and their culture. So, I think it would be great modeling for our young people to change the name of this holiday. I think it could lead to educational opportunities about the people who lived here and continue to live here, that I think part of the education that we experienced is that the indigenous people were here and they're not anymore, and that's not true. We are surrounded and living in community with many, many indigenous people, and to have a day that celebrates them and offers opportunities for learning for adults and children, I think, would be terrific.
Thank you. Any other comments? Member Karen?
Yes.
What he said? That's what I was going to say.
I honestly thought we had already done this.
I did, too. I could not find any evidence of it, and I assumed that I was remembering my employer doing it. Greenfield Community College did it a couple of years ago, and I just assumed I remembered wrong. ASKP, do you have any knowledge of us changing this previously? I don't.
I don't.
Okay, yeah, and that was what my research showed. Sounds like we're ready to vote. Anyone opposed or abstaining? All those in favor? Yes, so that passes unanimously. Wonderful. So, it will be reflected moving forward on the school calendar. Okay. We are going to do an executive session tonight. It is for exemption number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and my favorite part is that I do so declare. And we will return to open session, and item number nine on the agenda to vote on the cafeteria worker settlement agreement does tell you what we're talking about in executive session, and we are hoping to come back and tell you that we're voting in favor of it, and I'll leave it at that. I'm sorry, Filipe, you have to stay. So, I need a motion to convene the executive session.
So moved, Weidergartner.
And a second. Okay. We have to do a roll call vote for this, right?
We do. Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom, Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, yes. Chair Poiroti?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and we will have just a five-minute break, folks, so we can move into this. Executive session across the hall, straight across. And we are needing a motion. Hang on. Does anyone have their settlement agreement out? I got it. I would like a motion to approve as presented the settlement agreement by and between the Greenfield School Committee and the UPS EU Local 424 Cafeteria Workers.
So moved, Weidergartner.
And the mayor. And a second.
Second.
That was Member Wall with the second. Any discussion? Sounds like we're ready to vote. Do we need to do a roll call vote? We do not, right? Any abstentions? Any opposed? So, that passes unanimously. The cafeteria worker settlement agreement is approved, and we appreciate them so much and are thrilled to have this be moving forward. And now, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just thanks to the committee members and staff who worked on that as well. Thanks for everyone for such good cooperative work.
Thank you. Secretary Johnson Musad, and a motion to adjourn.
So moved. A second.
And that was the second. And we are adjourned as of 8:40 PM. Thank you, everyone.